I've not seen him in a long time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do you have any more thoughts for your individual judges?
Seven, eleven o'clock.
Perfect.
I'll be there.
Okay, and we'll have everything scheduled.
As soon as we can.
Okay, and I'm going to stop. We'll be on the eight o'clock.
Yeah, hey.
Okay.
All right.
Talk to Courtney. Thank you.
Courtney, you ordered it?
Courtney ordered it.
Courtney.
Put my name on this piece here, so I don't forget.
Take it up at the department.
On record.
Good evening, welcome to City of Lincoln City City Council meeting for Monday, March 26, 2018. I show six, six o'clock, close enough. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up at the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'd be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Dawn Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Susan Walkie.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Consent agenda. Regular meeting minutes of work session, July 3, 2017, 2:30 p.m. Regular meeting minutes of regular meeting, March 12, 2018, 6:00 p.m. The motion?
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Second. Motion to second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Not a single typo?
Yes.
I guess I should say.
Nothing substantial.
Well done.
I did send a few things to Kathy, but nothing big.
All right. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a councilor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. No one signed up. Anyone who did not sign up wish to speak? Seeing none, we move on. Presentations, none. Public hearing, public comments. Resolution 201804, resolution adopting the supplemental budget of the City of Lincoln City, Oregon, for the fiscal year 2017-18. Mr. Capitello.
Your Honor, this is a resolution that I believe there's requests for a continuance on Resolution 201804, so.
I move to continue this hearing to April 9, 2016, at this location at 6:00 p.m.
2001?
It says 16. I think it should be 18.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Resolution 201803.
Your Honor, council, this is a resolution updating the public record fees. It's really not that much of an update. What it really is, and I told you this about a month ago when we adopted the public records policy update, that I wanted to pull out all the fees regarding public records and put them into a resolution and then make them a link on the website. So, this goes along with sometime tomorrow, Courtney will turn on the changes, the update to the website. There'll be a drop-down menu on the left side. You can click on public records request. It'll take you to a page. It'll reference, link you to the ordinance, which is our public records policy. It'll link you to this resolution that tells you what the fees are, and it'll link you to a form that you can print out and then fax or email to Kathy. So that was the plan, I told you a month ago, and so that's what we've done. We're not at the point where we have a fill-in-the-blank-on-the-computer form where you submit, but you can, it's a fillable form you can then print and email in. This resolution, so the really, the only changes were we got rid of a couple old fees, like, we don't have tapes anymore that we use for recordings, so we dropped a couple fees that associated with that outdated media. We added a USB drive fee. We added a private Dropbox account fee.
Could you clarify that USB fee?
It's just the cost.
If someone brings you something, or we record it on and give it to them?
Yeah, if, if we're going to put something on a USB for you, we're going to charge you 15 bucks for the USB. Now, if you bring your own USB and give it to us, we, it would just be the cost to staff, so. Private Dropbox is the actual cost, and so we had, like, an attorney submit a request for a large records request, and the easiest way to get them that information was to put it to a Dropbox. And there's a cost for that, so we add that actual cost to their, their public records request. The page two, the maps, some of the pages, or some of the, there was no distinction between the costs of color and black and, black and white, and so, the, it used to be $5 for a color copy. I believe now it's 15. Used to be $150 for an hour for GIS maps. Now it's just $15 for a GIS map on a CD. A GIS map in 24 by 36 is $15. Used to be $100 per hour. So we corrected that to make it more consistent, and we clarified that it's actually the loaded hourly rate of the employees that we bill. When you get above 15 minutes of staff time, we bill you personnel costs. If you're below 15 minutes of staff time, and it takes us 15 minutes or less to get it done, you only pay the cost of the USB or the cost of the CD. If it costs, if it takes more than 15 minutes, you're going to end up paying whatever the actual loaded hourly rate is of the employee that responded to your request. So that just, that's really the only changes to the fees. All these fees are essentially in the omnibus resolution now. I just wanted them all pulled out and updated and available on the websites, so we had a little more user-friendly public records request process. If there are problems, email me or Kathy. Our emails will be in the resolution, or my assistant's emails in the resolution, and we'll work on it to make it more user-friendly. So ask for approval of Resolution 201803.
I have questions, but I'll wait till the discussion period, I guess.
Oh, okay. Me too.
So.
Motion?
Do we need a com, do we need comment? Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Because this is 294, 160, we're changing a couple fees, we need to ask for public comment.
Thank you, council. Appreciate that. At this time, anyone in the public, member public, wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, thank you. So we do have several questions, but I guess we're going to wait for the motion.
Move to approve Resolution Number 2018-03.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Counselor Walkie.
I see you have listed two items under notary public. One, if it's related to city business, and one if it's not related to city business. It used to be the case that a notary couldn't charge some people and not others. Has that been changed?
What I know is that's what we currently do. So I haven't, didn't look into this being changed. It was just what, that's carried forward what we, what we do now.
If you have one notary that's not charging anybody, that would work, and then a different notary that would charge people, that would work. Okay. But I, I don't think a notary can charge some people and not others.
Okay, well, I can, I'd work that out with Mr. Chandler, make sure we have someone who's assigned to do city business for free.
Right.
And then someone who's in, can do stuff, walk in.
As a notary, you can either charge somebody, I mean, everybody or nobody.
Okay.
I just said, thank you. I just had an easy one, just the, under that first category of one under, in the table, the photocopy charges, I was just wondering, is that by how much they actually cost? They seem a little bit high, but I haven't paid for photocopying in a long time.
This is just carried forward from the existing fee resolution. So I didn't ask anybody to justify whether or not it costs 30 cents or not. It was just, that's what our current fee is. It's not really changed.
Just seems like a lot. A dollar for one side of a color copy, eight and a half by 11, it just seems high to me, but I don't know.
Sorry, Your Honor, but would that include the time of someone picking it up, getting it, copying it, bringing it back?
If it's less than 15 minutes, it doesn't, if it's less than 15 minutes, we're not going to ask for anything other than what's here on the paper. So if you come in and you want five color copies, we'll charge you five bucks, but we don't charge for our personnel time. But if you come in and you ask for 150 color copies, we're going to charge it that plus the time it takes over 15 minutes, so. If you want us to evaluate these fees, I can, I can do that. I just didn't, I didn't actually change this, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
These fees were evaluated years ago when they first went into effect, and it comes right close to, with a lot of our photocopy machines, it comes right close to a dollar to do a photo, a color copy, and it was real close to 30 cents for, for a black and white.
Okay, my question is the difference between a black and white photocopy and a computer-generated report. One is 30 cents and one is 50 cents. Is it because it's cheaper to use a laser printer or more expensive to use a laser printer? It's 20 cents more to print something from a computer screen. I'm a little lost why it's not the same. I suppose the difference is 40.
Again, I just took these from the existing administrative fee schedule, item 63 through 66 on the photocopies.
Well, maybe my question should be not to you, but to Ron, as to, I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you. The, what's the difference between someone saying print and, it seems like it's more labor-intensive to carry something to a copy machine than to print? Yeah, it's not a huge point. I'm not going to hold things up for it. It's just one of those things I think we should look at.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Also, the library charges 10 cents a copy, so I was just wondering if that's, it needs to be updated, you know, if it's a black and white copy for 30 cents, one floor up, versus, and I understand it's getting the report and stuff like that, just to have that difference.
I'm not sure if the libraries, are they making the copies for you, or?
I don't know. That's per-page printed, so that might be a difference.
Mayor, I can respond to that. The, the library, copy machine, friends of the library are collecting the payment on that, not the Driftwood Library. That's what, what the difference is.
Any other? Nope. Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm going faster than I keep my finger. Okay, ordinance is 201805, ordinance is lost. Go ahead.
Your Honor, council, this is second reading of Ordinance 201805, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City providing for the levy of final assessments for the construction of a sewer improvement project known as the Northeast 36th Drive Sanitary Sewer Local Improvement District, formed by Resolution 2017-16. Fixing and spreading said final assessment amounts against properties within the district. Your city engineer is always doing the math, and so she made some updates to the report so that we got all the numbers right, so I have a couple of numbers to read to you and a couple, couple words that I added. So, in the whereas clauses on the first page, the following consideration, it states whereas, following consideration of written objections and comments at the public hearing on February 26. It says the council continued deliberations to March 26, so that reflects where we are. And then at the meeting of March 26, the city council hopefully will proceed and modify this based on the March 2018 report. Stephanie's report was changed from February to March. Under paragraph two, under total cost, the city, the city recorder has completed the assessment role covering the total cost of the project, which was, the number is now revised to be 305,430.17, as detailed in Attachment 1, Exhibit C, which was less than 2017 estimate of 333,560. In paragraph three, assess property, we added reference to Exhibits A and B, because B is the nice friendly map that shows the boundaries. Under final assessment role, Exhibit C is changed to Exhibit A, and that could have been treated just as a typo, but we've, I'm just letting you know. Under Section 5 also, it says Attachment 1, Exhibit A, instead of Exhibit C, which the earlier draft had Exhibit C. Codification, Section 10, there are cross-references, eight, Sections 8 through 10 on line four. Again, that's really just a correction, but I'm just pointing it out. And in, the date of the ordinance obviously is moved to March from February. In the engineer's report, which is attached, the, the project summary cost, as I read earlier, is 305,430.17, corrected from what it said last time. The unit cost in, under method of assessment is 7,272.15, and that's again, just taking into account, you all had directed the removal of the percent for art, and, and because there was, remember, two people that appeared and said, wait a minute, we only got one connection, they, their additional connection got added. That adjusted the cost and up, and so you gained a little bit by taking out percent for art, but went back up a little bit to add additional connection. And I think the last change is just in Exhibit C, the, the construction cost is 264, 263, which the total then, that leads you to 305,430.17, and under the monthly estimate, it's finance construction only cost 4350, financing construction cost and SDC is $67. And at the very end down there, under estimated onsite cost, that was corrected to reflect approximately $4,000 to connect to gravity sewer for a total of 5,100. Again, those are just some updates to the engineer report, because Stephanie's always trying to give you the absolute best product. So, with that, I'd ask for approval of second reading with the changes as read.
Motion, motion to approve second reading and adopt ordinance 201805 with changes that were read.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Williams?
I'm sorry, me?
Roll call.
I'm sorry, yes. Aye.
I'm sorry.
I'm sure you said my name.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Walkie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. No resolutions. Special order of business, economic development, new urban renewal district formation. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. All right. So I come before you this evening to review some council information for you on the process timeline and costs to form new urban renewal districts or areas, and talk about the possible new areas, and then ultimately determine staff direction for this economic development item. Just to give a little bit of background, the city council and Urban Renewal Agency held a joint work session last July, and after that, we were asked to come back and present a little more information on process and timeline, so we did that in September. And at that meeting, you asked to talk more specifically about what some potential areas could be for new urban renewal areas. So that's the information that I've got for you tonight, just very broadly. So what is urban renewal? Urban renewal is an economic development and funding tool available to cities and counties, and authorized by the State of Oregon laws, which is ORS Chapter 457. When you talk to urban renewal people, you'll hear this Chapter 457 fairly often. And it uses public investment to stimulate private investment. The purpose is to help communities improve and redevelop areas which are deteriorated, unsafe, showing signs of economic or physical conditions that are detrimental to the community as a whole. In addition, these areas can have deteriorated streets and utilities, or the areas may lack streets and utilities altogether. Just kind of interesting tidbit, Oregon was the second state to authorize urban renewal. Urban renewal provides three types of authority that are otherwise not available to local governments. First, it allows for the use of tax increment financing, or TIF district, to fund those improvement projects. Second, it allows for the special ability to buy and assemble property for development. And third, it allows for special flexibility in working with private parties to complete development projects. After an area or district is formed, the taxes are what they call frozen within the area, and a portion of any increase in those property values goes to fund projects in the urban renewal plan for that district. Taxes do not increase for properties in the district, but they are reallocated or shared with the overlapping taxing districts for that duration of the district. So I know you're all well aware of our existing district. I'm talking to you in one of those weird ways where here you are as council members, and at other occasions, you meet as the Urban Renewal Agency Board. So, let's see, the current, the current area or district was formed in 1988 by the city council, after establishing the Urban Renewal Agency made up of you, which is the governing body and oversees the district activities. The final bond sale for the district that we have occurred last year to finalize projects, and it will be paid back by the year 2024 to bring the total investment by funds from this district to $43 million. The funds have been further leveraged through partnership projects with other public and private entities, and a list of the agency goals and objectives is included in your packet. I also wanted to just put a map up on the screen. This is in your packet as well. This shows the other urban renewal districts or areas in Oregon. Just for example, City of Newport has, I think, four at this, at this time. Salem, I think, seven or eight, and Portland, over 20 districts. And again, the funds cannot be crossed between the districts, so each district has its own discrete plan, and set of projects, and funding mechanism. You can't take money from one and transfer it to the other. As you know, our current district runs mostly along Highway 101 in the commercial corridor, and in a few spots, it goes west to the ocean. It covers, it looks like 1,046 square miles, just under 700 acres, and about 18% of the city land area. Let's see, for, for cities with populations under 50,000, which is us, we can create urban renewal districts containing more, no more than 25% of the current acreage or assessed value of the city. And if a new district were formed, it would likely have to go into effect once our existing district goes away, when the last bond is paid off, which will happen again sometime before 2024. It does take anywhere from a year and a half to two years to create a new district, and depends on how complicated or simple that process would be. Again, depends on each district characteristics. And the estimated consulting costs are about 30,000 or 35,000 per area, and then there are other administrative costs like recording fees and postage. We have to do this thing called a super notice. You all may have remembered that when we did our amendment to our current district, and so there are some other costs that factor into those requirements. And I think that that covers most of the background and kind of what urban renewal is. Are there any questions before we move into the possible areas?
I do. Under what is urban renewal, it says that uses public investment to stimulate private Can you give me some examples of how that's been done?
Sure. Our loan program is one of the best examples, where we offer facade improvement, energy efficiency, and business expansion loans. So those are 0% or business expansion can be up to 2% interest, depending on how much is taken out, and that is a way that the public funds that are coming from the urban renewal district are going back out into the community to partner with those private property owners in order to make improvements on their building. And then when those funds are repaid, it goes back into the pot of money for the loan fund that's then issued again. We've also done coordinated public infrastructure projects. You know, when we do an infrastructure project, we meet with the affected property owners. We have a lot of community input on that, and so in that respect, we would have ideally a better project than just if we marched in and did what we thought was best. So in that way, we're partnering with private sector as well.
And that stimulates private investment?
Yes. The whole idea with urban renewal is to create a good foundation for further investment in the area.
And then, when we talk about, after an area or district is formed, the taxes are frozen within that area, and any of the increase in the value goes to the urban renewal plan for that district, who doesn't get that money?
The overlapping taxing districts. They basically get that frozen value, so they live on what they've been getting for the time that urban renewal exists. And then the idea is when urban renewal goes away, the values within that taxing district are higher than what they would have been if all those improvements had not been made.
And those taxing districts, can you give me an idea who is affected by that?
Sure, yeah.
Sure.
So it would be the city, yourselves, the county, Devil's Lake Water Improvement District. There's an in and an out category for if they're in the watershed or out of the watershed. The fire district, and the school district, and I think I might be forgetting. Hospital, thank you. Yes. How could I forget our hospital?
I thought there was an exemption for the school district.
There is. So while they are in our overlapping taxing district, and they are one of the people that, or entities we would share tax revenue with, they are what they call backfilled by the state. So in essence, for our local school, school district, they are not having a direct impact.
Where do they get the money?
From the state.
No, where does the state get the money?
From the state budget.
But they're not getting, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I think that was the end of my questions. Anyone else? No? Okay.
Okay. So I showed you the map of the urban renewal areas in the state. Just briefly, also, I have the urban renewal goals and objectives in your packet if you're curious about the existing area, some of the things that we have had on our list of goals, and I think really those goals are reflected in our 27 Years of Urban Renewal Report, which is available online, or people can swing by the office if they have questions or want to flip through a booklet. Basically lists all of our projects, who our partners are in those projects, and then has some pictures of, of the before and after. Okay, so the first possible area is what I call the Roads End or Villages District. And these have all been discussed before, so kind of just brushed the dust off the folder here. This district includes most properties in the Roads End neighborhood, as well as several large undeveloped parcels to the east, which is the Villages property. And although visual blight is not evident, findings will likely show basic infrastructure in this district. in this district currently meet that definition of blight. So when we're talking about blight, it doesn't have to be, you know, the whole area is in the doldrums and it just is horrible. It can just be, again, blight is defined in many ways, but in this instance, it's basically underutilized property values or lacking infrastructure. So streets, sidewalks, stormwater, wastewater, and water. Different things like that, that, that would be lacking. So efforts for this area could include parking analysis with recommendations to address infrastructure priorities, water, sanitary sewer, storm lines, and those are approaching their expected lifespan or lacking. And then the district would also be able to provide economic development opportunities for the Villages at Cascadehead Commercial District, which we know that that property is under master plan revision at the moment. So once that gets solidified, then it would become more clear about what might be needed there. And also some improvements to city open spaces. It would be a good candidate for an under levy plan, which is where we don't collect our full 100% tax increment. And I have to check on this, but I think that now, when you create a district, you have to under levy to a certain extent. I don't think you can take your full 100% share, which is what we have been doing for the first 25 years of our current urban renewal plan. So, no, that's kind of, I can get in the weeds on some of this, so I'm happy to get back to you on more questions if you have them, and I can't answer them tonight. So part of this district includes some of our existing plan, and then two vacant parcels, which would need to be annexed. The total area would be 367 acres. Are there any questions on this one?
Please.
Yeah, you just started to answer one about the under levy, but I'll, I'll see you later. I don't understand it. I just wanted to ask you about the two lots, or do you, where are they? Are they in the Village? I mean, I just don't.
Yeah, they're, they're not in the Villages property. They're along, I believe both of them are along Logan Road. So as you drive into the Villages, I'm sorry, into Rhodes End, on the east side of Logan Road, I think there are two larger tracts of land that are, they were not annexed as part of the Rhodes End annexation.
Could one of them be the area that was the planning commission was looking at a couple of years ago for the Logan Park development? I'm just trying to figure out how large these lots are.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I can get more information on the acreage to you.
Yeah, I just, I can't place them, so I'm trying to figure out what that is. And then just in the language, if this is selected, number one, then I would just like to see if we can revise the language that now says curbs and gutters and sidewalks, because that's not appropriate. I mean, I could speak for the neighborhood here. They wouldn't go for that. So I'm just saying, if we could consider other language there.
Yeah, this is really just a, a large kind of fishnet encapsulating all the, all the possibilities, not really in any detail, but this would, this would be, at this point, it would be exploring the feasibility, mostly economic feasibility of a district, what the projects could be, but at some point in time, there would have to be a lot more discussion about exactly what you said, and maybe even some community meetings or community visioning to really drill down to what are the actual projects that are needed and why, and then how to prioritize them.
Okay, because I have some other language suggestions if we get that far. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So if you can say, the tax agreement over a 25-year period is 40 million, and the other three are 10 million. Very briefly, can you tell me the, is that based upon the revenue of the area?
Yeah.
The estimated revenue that we would get, correct?
Yes.
So in effect, we were choosing Rhodes End specifically because of the high concentration of VRDs as its economic development and its potential as vacation rentals? That's why it was chosen, because we're using public money to support private businesses, and that's why specifically Rhodes End was there, is for that type of business, as there isn't other businesses there.
I think it's more about the lack of infrastructure and the need for improvements in that area, rather than, yeah.
But urban renewal is for businesses, right?
Our current district is mostly for businesses.
And the other three that's been put here was for businesses as well?
Yes, I mean, you know, all of Cutler City is in the urban renewal area.
Currently, right.
So there's a lot of residential and a very small bit of commercial. And, and really, as we did the community visioning from Taft to Ocean Lake, Nelscott, and Cutler City, we, the percentage of residential to commercial changed, because Cutler was mostly residential, whereas Taft was mostly commercial. So each part of town is different.
And then, though the taxes are frozen, you said, so how would that impact the TRT that way? Is it separate that way?
That's a great question. I think TRT is separate. Do you happen to know that?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chandler? It would not. The TRT is based upon the, based upon what people are paying to occupy a lodging unit. These are based on property taxes. So it would not affect that. And I might add that the purpose of the urban renewal districts are to, as Allison mentioned, to correct blight in all its many forms and definitions. It is not specifically meant as something that is a, a business tool. So it can be used in residential areas, it can be used in industrial areas, it can be used in commercial areas. The defining part of it is that it's meant to, to take care of blight.
In that very general sense of?
Yes, sir.
What we determine blight to be?
Yes, sir.
Moving along to the next possible area, this is 23rd Industrial or Mixed Use District. This one has, primarily has properties located in the county, and it's currently being developed for light industrial and manufactured uses. Other properties include large timbered parcels, considering planned unit development, and a few parcels along Highway 101. The district lacks adequate water, sewer, storm, or streets for orderly development at the highest and best use. And as you may remember, the area also recently underwent the Nelscott Gap Refinement Plan, which was a community-driven, long-range planning process to assess how the area might be developed and the future need for infrastructure, including streets, parks, and commercial development. The majority of the district needs to be annexed prior to the establishment of this district, and this estimated area is about 307 acres. And as Councilmember Hoagland mentioned, this one, we, this is very, very estimate, but $10 million over a 25-year program. Those numbers would get more accurate as we move forward, if you all decide to do that this evening. Are there any questions on this one?
I was just wondering why this one and the fourth one seem to be about the same thing?
Good question.
You know, we're having, I mean, I see that maybe the other one, the other one would include Nelscott more specifically, but, you know, it looks to me like the same thing. So why, why have it that way?
Well, the, the driving objective for the 23rd street area would be employment, industrial, mixed-use development, workforce housing. All of those things were identified in the Nelscott Gap Refinement Plan.
Right.
And urban renewal was identified as a possible funding source, if the city decided to do it. And then the driving objective for the number four, which we'll get to, that one really is about creating a different transportation corridor. It could be that the two could be combined. I don't know, because we'd have to do feasibility analysis on that. And it just depends on, you know, what concepts are a higher priority than others, and if the ideas are good or, or not.
Right. Also, you know, we have the Rhodes, the north end of town, I forget what you labeled it here, North Rhodes End, but that area, the 23rd Street, you know, Niatus not so much, but, you know, when we were talking about, we had these master plans developed, and at the time, how much at the time were those studies completed? Did urban renewal have a part in it? You know, so, you know, we all knew that urban renewal was going to stop. I've asked, you know, multiple times, you know, are we going to go from urban renewal to economic development and stuff like that? So for me personally, it's been very kind of, well, maybe over here, and maybe over here, and it's been very unclear, that, you know, it's, it's, it's sunsetting, it's ending, and then it doesn't. And then now, we're not going to create another urban renewal, and now here we are. You know, in my mind, I had a very specific, it's ending.
Yes.
And now here we are, talking about it again.
Yeah.
Which is fine. But when we pay for those studies, and, and we had those, you know, the 23rd Street or the Villages, the north end of town, you know, how important was urban renewal in those developments?
Mm-hmm.
You know, is that a crucial part of that to happen? Or in addition to that, was there a way to create these without urban renewal?
That's a really good question. I think that it's possible to create development and redevelopment opportunities. It just takes longer without urban renewal, so it depends on the pace that, that the city wants to go with, with these areas. And, and yes, the current district, it's been confusing. It's something that we did in 1988, and so the plan has had minor amendments and substantial amendments, and all this legal ORS Chapter 57 activities that have happened. And, you know, when we created the district, we said it would live for 25 years, and then we realized that the timing wasn't the requirement, it was what they call maximum indebtedness, which was that $43 million cap. And we, because of Measure 5 and 50, that changed the tax situation, we were not able to achieve our projections that we set out to achieve in 1988. And so we needed more time to collect what we intended to collect, so.
Because it was based on that?
Yes. So, and then, also, you know, we have the urban renewal agency, and we have the urban renewal district, and the agency manages the district. And I think as we'd been plugging along through all of these improvements, we talked about it, as you mentioned, and maybe not a very clear way, about the agency never goes away, it's the district that goes away. So as long as the agency still has assets to manage, the agency will exist. And as I mentioned, you could have one, two, three, however many urban renewal districts, you know, based on acreage and assessed value and, and whatever priorities are for the city. We have had one district for 20, gosh, I don't know how many it is now, but eventually it'll be up to 35 years, so I think we're at 32 or something. And so, yes, it's a learning curve, and it's, you know, we get excited about doing projects instead of this bureaucratic procedural legal stuff. So I apologize that we haven't been as clear as we could be. I'm trying to do that now better, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there other questions?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so when we talked about the Nelscott Gap Plan, that specific city-owned and private-owned property in that area was not in an urban renewal district. Is that correct?
That's.
On the east side of 101 there?
Yeah, that, that's correct. There are some properties, as you remember, in 2006, we did the Nelscott Community Vision. And the highway is basically the spine that makes all of the urban renewal district contiguous, because, because you have to have, all the parcels in, in one urban renewal area have to be contiguous or connected. And so as soon as you go east on 23rd, I think there are one or two parcels that are close to that intersection of Highway 101 and 23rd that are in the district, but it doesn't go east from Highway 101.
So if you were to incorporate number two and number four together, would that include any portions of the current Nelscott Gap District for urban renewal?
It could.
It could.
It could.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. And obviously, we have to get rid of our existing district if we want to do another one, because right now, we're at, I think, 18 or maybe even 20%. And we are only allowed 25% in total. So we don't have a lot of room to create a new area now. We would have to do some work feasibility and get, get the ducks in a row on things. And then that district, if there is a new one or two, would go into effect when this existing district is done.
Mr. Mayor? Councilwoman Anderson's next.
Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, I think the, what I would do, I think Allison answered your question well, but what I would suggest, you look at the opening sentence, and that uses public investment to stimulate private investment. And so going to your number two, you, if you think, knowing you've been up 23rd, it's no utilities, everything else, so, and even if you went to number four, map number four, and incorporated, as Judy has talked about, the question is, how do you start, you know, development?
Right.
And certainly, here's a vehicle, it's called money, urban renewal, to, you know, what if we put sewer and water up 23rd and gutted annexed? You, then the private sector would take over, and, you know, that, that's the kind of, what I view these, and trying to judge these four, is, is where, where can our money be leveraged? Public dollars be leveraged to increase the assessed value? Even number one, I have a little trouble, because I think, to your point, Rhodes End is built out, except for, you know, the Village business, so, you know, if you gut infrastructure into there, in theory, private sector took over. So I don't know what the increase in infrastructure in Rhodes End really adds. It, it might, and I think there's the, the kind of analysis that has to be done. Because you're in a developed area, you're only looking at roughly 3% increase every year in taxes, versus if you build new and add something, you're getting the big jumps. And I, I think, to our point, we've been looking for light industrial, you know, it's commercial, something other than just retail, commercial. And here's, I think, two of these, at least, talk about that.
So should we run through the other options?
Well, I'll save my question for the end. Does anyone else have a question at this point?
I, I don't.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. My question is just, I'm trying to, I'm not sure if all of them do, but most of them, most of these ideas seem to rely on annexation of some properties. And some of them I understand, but how do we square that with the needs analysis that showed that we don't need additional land annexed to the city? So do we just say, oh, too bad?
Yeah, that, that would all be addressed in feasibility studies if you want to move forward. I'm not a financial expert. I'm not, I'm, I'm a planner at the higher level of, of overview. I, I don't, I don't know the answer to those questions at this time. It's just a matter of, if you're interested in the idea of these projects for these areas, you know, we would get down the road and present more information to you, and, and then you would decide, do we want to form this district, or do we not want to form this district? So I wish I had more detailed information, but I, I just don't at this time.
Councilwoman Hoagland?
I'm good. Thank you.
So the third area, which you've already mentioned, is the Niatus District. This one could include infrastructure upgrades, roads, sidewalks, water, sewer. It could also emphasize commercial activity at the north end of Devil's Lake, as well as improvements along Highway 101, the north gateway to Lincoln City. There could also be a partnership with the school district. And there may also be opportunities, I know the question was asked, you know, two of the districts are kind of sharing some similar area and might have some shared projects. Can we combine things? And that might be possible for this one with the Rhodes End and Villages District, which was the number one area in your packet. So this area, roughly 433 acres and about $10 million. So this area, roughly 433 acres and about $10 million over 25 years. The last proposed area is Taft-Nell Scott Corridor District. And this includes properties in the county accessed by Southeast Twenty-Third Street and along the east side of Highway 101, from Southeast 20th to Southeast 29th. The area would be in and around the wastewater treatment plant, Schooner Creek Road, and along a corridor following the Lincoln Byway alignment. So again, this one would be mostly a transportation decision. And again, this is just for going forward with feasibility and, you know, exploratory. It's not to form a district tonight by any measure. So this would provide valuable redevelopment funding for underdeveloped areas of the city and areas to be annexed. It would also provide for the possibility of a two-and-a-half-mile Highway 101 byway, removing through traffic from Cutler City, Taft, and Nell Scott. Could create more of a Main Street type of a place along the south half of Highway 101 in town. There may be opportunities to include some Highway 101 projects from this district with the Twenty-Third Street Industrial Mixed Use District. This would be about 381 acres and $10 million. The last option is, here's our existing district, the orange, darker orange area. And there might be some opportunities to create a new district using some of the existing district parts if there were some projects that were not completed. Now, because we've reached our maximum indebtedness, we can't allow for, well, we can, but we don't, it's not typically a best practice to extend your maximum indebtedness because there are taxing districts who have been promised to receive their full tax increment once this district goes away. So there might be parts, for example, you know, Cutler City, we're finishing projects in Cutler City now. If there were projects that were not able to be accomplished, then it could be that Cutler City, again, just for example, could be recreated as its own district after this existing district goes away. So lots of options, and they are available for you to consider or not going forward with.
And Number Three, the Niatu District, there's a ton of maybes in there. At what point do we get those answered? And if they're not answered, then what, if we say, "Let's do this," and, because you've got Devil's Lake as well as improvements like, blah, 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 blah. There may be opportunities to include some projects from the District Rhodes End Village District. There was about the school maybe joining in. Along those paths, I mean, at what point do we say, "Well, it didn't happen," and what do we do?
Yeah, these are, again, just basically casting a really wide net of possibility for a district. It just depends on what sorts of projects are of interest and where you think that, you know, the whole idea of urban renewal is where you think that private investment is not going to occur at all or as quickly as you want to see it.
Right, and I'm getting that. I'll clarify my question. If we were to say, and I know we're not doing it tonight, but if we were to say, "Yeah, that's the one we want, Three, Niatu District." And because of those maybes, we don't know if it's going to go forward or not. And my question is, if they don't go forward, you don't get that cooperation from the school district, you don't get it from the other entities, what do we do then at that point? Do we say, "Well, we stop, we close up shop, and we move it to somewhere else"?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the idea of creating a district is dependent upon certain partnerships.
Okay, but it's being predicated on, this is, would need to happen if, in order to do these things?
It does not need to happen. Again, this is a wide net of possibility of projects. It does not mean that these actually literally are the projects for this district. This is just an idea. We know that the school district is considering purchase of property in this area, so it could be that they need some urban renewal assistance to help with developing their property.
Right, and I'm not arguing specifics. I know this is general, I'm just asking in a general way, if it doesn't go as planned, do we, what happens at that point? Do we just say, "Oh, we'll find some other use for the money," or?
Oh, oh, I see what you mean. Once a plant, once a district is formed...
Right. We go in with some suppositions.
We, we would want to clarify, we would want to clarify that before you decide to form a district.
Okay.
If the main purpose, let's say the byway concept, if the main purpose is to create a transportation corridor...
Right.
And you have property owners that are not willing to participate, you would not want to form that district because that is the only place for that road to go.
We would have that info before we voted?
Yeah, we, otherwise, the project, yes, absolutely. The project would not be possible.
Okay.
In some cases, and every district is different and every project is different, it just depends, you know, you would probably be asked, "Well, this project can't happen for some reason. Do you still want to do it because of X, Y, Z projects in the same area? Or is it enough to make a difference in terms of your willingness to go forward with forming that district?"
And then my next question is, and I want to go back to, and forgive me, because I'm in my third year of this, but I wasn't here at the beginning of an urban renewal district, and so I haven't paid a lot of attention.
Me neither.
It's like, it was just like, "Here's done, here's what we're doing." And, okay, I don't have a lot to say in that. So we're not contributing to these taxing districts. How long have we not been contributing to these taxing districts? Been 20 years? No, I...
If I can, that's not well-framed, if I can.
Then help me out.
What you, you, the taxing district still gets its money. The assessment just got frozen. So any increase didn't go to the hospital district, for example, the health district.
Right, so when was it frozen last?
When the district was formed.
When was that?
Eighty-eight or whatever the date was.
So we're looking 20 years.
Okay.
Right, 20 years without any extra...
Increase.
Increase.
Right.
So, and then we're looking at another 10 years, possibly with this next one, or? I'm just concerned that we're not kicking in our fair share on these things.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a kicking in fair share. It's a revenue sharing with those districts. So you're right, those districts are foregoing an increase. It's kind of like, if you get $100 a week and then we freeze the base, those taxing districts would continue to get $100 a week for 25, or in this case, 35 years. And then when we go away, they would get this jump to what the new assessed valuation is without urban renewal.
The number I'm looking for is, it's been 20 years. How much, what does that equate to?
It's $43 million.
That has not gone to the fire? We've given it to the school, though, even that entire time, or did that get changed?
That's right.
The state has. Right, okay, so, but that's for the full 20? That's nothing new where they...
It's $43 million over 35 years.
Yeah, that's a significant amount of money.
It is. The question that you need to ask yourself, and it comes to the heart of the urban renewal district, is would that tax increment have occurred if you had not created an urban renewal district? In other words, would the development have happened? Would the properties have been fixed up? At the heart of the question is what Councilor Anderson was talking about, is it's meant to be a stimulus to fix things or to create things. So the question you're really asking is, will that happen without an urban renewal district? I don't know that there's an answer to that question, but that's what you're trying to accomplish.
Relation says yes. Uh, use are going to go up, no matter, you know, you can talk about how quickly they're going to go up because you've injected something into it, but, you know, putting a wave in the middle of 101, I don't know if that really raised anyone's, you know, property values.
Well, we do know this, for example. We have businesses that have had a direct benefit in the upgrades of their property because of urban renewal district. We also know that there has been expansion and growth due to the fact that water and sewer has been extended or improved through the use of urban renewal money. I don't know that those businesses would have fixed their buildings up. I don't know if you would have seen that growth had not the infrastructure been put in. Normally, when you're doing a developer comes in, you will be requiring the developer to put in the infrastructure, make the improvements. They may or may not find that that's feasible to do. And so, again, it is meant to correct blighted conditions or improve conditions through the city's installation, in our case, mostly of infrastructure, but also in the case of the loans and the grants that have been given over time to improve buildings, exteriors, and interiors.
Sure, and I certainly understand that. I'm not going to beat this horse completely to death, but it does concern me that if our fire district isn't getting a portion, that would have gone to better equipment and things like that. And the, you know, the Devil's Lake Water District, where they short some money that they could have used to improve their projects. That's just my concern, and I don't need to be convinced tonight, but it's something I would like to talk about, is this is real money not going to somebody else that it's supposed to have gone to, in my words. It's something I want to talk about. And I like the idea of the sewer things. I like the idea of the street things. I'm not so crazy about some of the things that I've seen done. Again, personal opinion, and I'm hopefully, yeah, I like, I like most of it. Thank you. I'm off my soapbox now.
So, Mr. Mayor, the question I have is, is our decision tonight as simple as, do we want to look at all four or five of these, you know, write a check to have the consultant do the numbers on these, all of them, or one of them, or three of them? Is that kind of the question?
Yes, are there, are there any of them that are appealing to you? Now, I don't know that we'd want to pay to have feasibility analysis done on all of them when we know that we can't do all of them because we would hit our 25 percent of the area. So even, even if there are two of them, we would need to be cautious of how much acreage we're putting for each one.
And, Mr. Mayor, because I did that quick math, and it means we've got 7 percent of our acreage left for a new district until the current one rolls off in '24.
Yes, and we have up until 2024, but I believe with our bond payment schedule, I think it's more like 2021 or '22.
When it pays off.
We always want to pay things off early. And so if you decide to move forward, we would do some exploration on One, Two, Three, however many of these ideas you're interested in, and then we would obviously come back to you. But once you decide to move forward with forming a district, it would take a couple of years. So this is not a quick thing.
Do we get any kind of credit for the, you choose the wrong word, but I'll say it and you correct me, the loss of developable lands because of the tsunami happening? Are we still including those acres and we can't do anything with them? Are we still held to that? Did that question come out right?
Yeah, no, I think I understand what you're saying. I don't, I think the whole...
If they said we can have 100 acres, but 30 of it is untouchable, what good does it do to calculate that?
Well, I think that there's still development potential for properties that are in the tsunami inundation zone. It just depends on the type of construction, the permitting, the insurance, whether it's public or private. There are lots of factors that go into a decision about if someone would want to develop in the tsunami inundation zone. That doesn't mean that...
We want to provide money for that.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Yeah, so I'd like to kind of know. You don't have to answer tonight.
Well, that's not my decision. That's a policy decision.
It'd be nice to know if there's someone who's considered it, because we've talked about it before with the OCZMA. It's like, okay, you're taking this land away from us, basically, in theory. Give us some to the west, you know, let us open up our urban growth boundaries a little bit, and so, just something to kick around.
So...
Your season?
I'm done, please.
I was going to piggyback on his...
Councilor Hinton.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to say, I was trying to follow what you were saying, and it kind of makes sense to me to move the boundaries if that's what you're suggesting. But it made me think of something that I've thought of in the past and brought up, is the Willing Seller Program. Would this fit into, I mean, would urban renewal do something like that? Willing seller would be for those property owners within the inundation area, maybe a severe inundation area, if they would want to sell their property, if they wanted to sell it to get out of that area. Would this be a source of funding that the city could purchase that property, maybe turn it into open space or park or something that's, you know, not as high use and...
That's, that's a great question, and I appreciate that question. I think that really the purpose of urban renewal is to do development and redevelopment in order to get more, you know, I keep saying highest and best use, but really, it's about tax values that then feed back to the overlapping taxing districts. Urban renewal is not really designed to acquire property and then leave it in an undeveloped way, either through a park or open space, unless there's some kind of a tax benefit or an economic benefit to feed back into that tax pie. So, so it's possible, and I can certainly ask about it, if there are urban renewal districts that have been formed specifically around parks or open space. And if that's the case, then it could be that there's some program that's available. But the catch would be that you'd be using the urban renewal funds to acquire the property without getting some benefit back monetarily, and that, I don't know if that's...
Councilor Casper?
Yeah, I'd like to step up and say, Number Four, the Taft-Nell Scott Corridor District, there's property there that says it's 381 acres, but if you look at Number Two, it says 307 acres. If Number Two could somehow be included with Number Four, I have seen a lot of public participation in the Nell Scott Gap and projections for development in that area. And I would be interested in seeing what could be done with that property in the Corridor District as far as creating a new urban renewal district. And that's my two cents.
And Mr. Chandler, you?
No. Yeah, I'd agree with that. It would seem to be something that would just flow nicely, Two and Four together. Although I don't sure what Main Street means anymore, but I'd be willing to listen.
If I may, my only question about that is, we have a lot of Main Street already that has some empty storefronts, so I'd be just a little bit thoughtful about that, is all I would say. And have we received interest in any light industry?
Mr. Chandler?
I'm sorry?
Have we received any interest from light industry looking for space and...
Not a lot. We have had some of our property development that we've been looking at, some expressions of interest, but we have not been able to discuss those fully with them, but not a lot as far as light industry goes.
I think part of that reason is because Lincoln City, you know, it's off the highway, so it's not very visible for a lot of people that come through town. And we're not really thought of in that way. We're thought of more as, you know, our tourism economy. So in my opinion, it's more an issue of marketing, what we have as an opportunity rather than what inquiries we've had already.
So tonight, you would like us to give you initial thoughts? Or just, we just thank you and go our merry way?
We'd like some direction as to how you would like to proceed with, as far as the creation of a new district?
Okay, so, I'm still just trying to figure out how to form this, and so we can all say something. Do we just, Number One, yes, no? And then just go down two, three, four? That work for council, or tell me how to move forward here? How would you like to express our interest to...
I don't, I don't disagree with Judy's recommendation. I guess I feel a little bit short, prepared, unprepared, might be the way. Because I would, I'd kind of like to do an interim, maybe with all of us to rush, you know, list our own pros and cons on each one, you know, in a work session, and collectively, then, you know, you might convince one over another because of the visions you see versus someone else.
Would you be, I remember once we went with, I think, Deborah and Richard on a little bus tour of the area behind the quarry. And it was very beneficial to me to see what they were talking about. Would that be something of interest to council to hop in the van one day and go through these together?
It would, as well as to sit down and start making that list of, you know, I think Allison does a nice job to give us the big overview, but I think we need another, at least I do, another step of, you know, what really is the potential if we put public dollars in here and what, to your point, the long-term benefit? Because I know that's what we'd be buying, but, you know, on the napkin kind of thing because, listening to you, you struggling with, you know, taking somebody's tax dollars and you want to make sure you see opportunities enough that they're going to make that and more back. And, you know, because I think what we're looking at is, you know, $60, $100,000 is... And, you know, because I think what we're looking at is, you know, 60, $100,000 is to, to do a couple of studies.
That, that's actually to form the districts.
Oh, so what, what would be the studies then, I guess?
Yeah, if you look on your packet, page 34, or the second page of the staff report that talks about the process and timeline.
Yeah.
So, so this, this staff report with pros and cons, I, I didn't do so much cons. I mean, the mayor, you know, expressed what the cons are generally for the city when it comes to revenue sharing with our overlapping taxing districts. The pros are listed as the possible projects for each of these areas, and then, right now, we're kind of in this phase one, we're, we're determining what interest you have. If you do have interest, we would go into phase two, which would be establish a boundary, what, what would the boundary be? And then, we can't exceed our acreage, and then we would talk about how to demonstrate blight and develop a project list, complete a financial analysis, and do outreach to the taxing districts. So the phase two would really provide the information in detail, and we wouldn't just do that and then give it to you. We would talk about it along the way as we, as we, as it evolved. So, you know, it's kind of cart and horse, and I completely understand that it's hard to make a decision about an area when maybe you haven't seen it in this way before in a while, and, you know, what, what could it look like? So-
But I guess my question is, what does phase two cost? If we, if we were willing to pay up for a phase two on two or, or three of the, you know, two of these areas?
Yeah. If you'd like, I can get more information on what the consultant would cost to, to do more, more detail from, from this point without having to buy the whole-
Right.
Hit and caboodle?
If I could, in that just initial, you know, broad brush from consultant, could we kind of get an idea of, of each one of these groupings as you have them on here? Because they're just kind of like loops, so we don't have boundaries and that, so they couldn't be specific. But just kind of like what it would, what the potential is, which you outlined generally, and then what the outcome would be. I mean, how, how much of a difference would it make? Like, there's some comments, like Counselor Hogan, Hogan was worried about it being, you know, not businesses like the north end, but then, but that might not matter. I'm just wondering what, at the end, where would we get our most out of the effort?
Yeah, and, and the reason why we didn't get to a parcel level is because I was hoping we wouldn't get to a discussion of is, why is this property in, why is this property out? This is really a, a 10,000-foot view, and we would get to that discussion about what projects, and oh, guess what? This is right next to an intersection we want to make an improvement, you know, ADA or take it off of wires like we did at First Street, or any number of things that, that we have done or, or haven't done, for that matter. So, yes, you're right, this, this is very broad brush stroke, and, you know, it, it would take a lot of staff time to get to that level, and-
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting to do that, I just, I'm having a hard time looking. I see the value in each one of these, and I appreciate them, but I don't know which one would provide more to, back to the city, or provide more for-
So do you think a tour would be-
Absolutely, absolutely.
Probably our next step?
And I would suggest that we have that tour, and that we sit down either after, if it's the same day, and just list our questions, things that we didn't, don't know even by looking at the property, just what, what is it that we're curious about?
Okay.
Then send you away to go find all those answers.
Okay, so there are a couple of options. I can find out from our consultant what that phase two work would be, or, or kind of a, of an intro to that phase two work. I could also, if you would like, ask the consultant if they'd be able to come to that work session and answer your questions better than I can, or, again, I can just take the questions, and then we can have another discussion down the road.
If I may ask one more question? We can't have more than 25%, you said, and so with all of these, with all of our options, is there some limit we don't want to?
Yeah, I-
What if we like four out of five of them? Is that even possible?
Yeah, we cannot do them all. We absolutely cannot do them all.
So we would need to know.
We would exceed our area. So I would pick, if I were you, I would pick one or two of these based on the areas of town that you know need the most improvement, or you've heard from constituents that they want improvements. And I know everyone wants improvements, I, I wish we could underground all the utilities, but we all have limitations with the, with the pot of money available. So that's really up to council to decide what your priorities are, and then, you know, let us know how we can help implement those.
Maybe you can coordinate with Ron, and we can work out some kind of work session and make that happen?
We'll do that.
Okay, good. All right, real good. Thank you, Allison.
Thanks.
Excellent presentation. Northeast Port Lane Street Improvement Construction Award.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we are asking to award a construction contract to overlay and install a traffic calming circle at Northeast Port Lane and Northeast Port Place. Before I get into the bids, I'd like to describe the project a little bit. The pavement on this road is in very poor condition, and it's due for an overlay. There's also an uncontrolled 90-degree bend in this road where the cul-de-sac of Port Place comes in to a dog leg or a 90-degree bend at Port Lane. It's uncontrolled right now, and I've had several, several complaints over the years about people cutting that corner, near head-on collisions, people not feeling safe, sight distance issues, et cetera. So the residents, actually, the people that live right on the corner, had several ideas about how to control that intersection, and one was to put a small traffic circle, which would, in lieu of, instead of a three-way stop, would just allow people to maneuver around that intersection safely. The circle we're proposing is only about 19, about 20 feet roughly in diameter. That still leaves 17-foot lanes around the entire area, and we've done modeling that shows traffic can safely navigate, trucks can safely navigate. Also, I've talked to the Pete, the police department, Keith Killian and Doug Kerr with the fire department, they both like this idea. The raised circle is only three inches tall over a six-inch kind of slope, so it's not a terribly difficult island to get over with the fire, with the fire rig or emergency vehicles. So, and, and what we did was, we melded out the plans to all the residences along the roads that were impacted with the overlay, and I received mostly positive comments. We did have some questions, and we got back to people. I noticed there were some that came in today, concerns. I do want to just let everyone know, though, we've modeled this carefully, we've looked at this, it's a small circle, it's not going to be a big confusing roundabout. You just stay in the right lane and make a controlled, slow movement onto Port Lane, from Port Lane to Port Lane. There are some areas that are, are bad enough, we'll be digging out and replacing the base and cleaning up the shoulders, however, this does not include sidewalks. So we opened bids on March 15th, we received two bids, one from Road and Driveway, one from North Sandy on paving. The lowest and responsive, responsible bidder was Road and Driveway in the amount of $74,340.43. The budget was identified and approved and identified in the 1718 fiscal year budget. The budgeted amount was $150,000, and we, we did the design in-house with the extra cost to complete, the total cost of the project is $285,000. So tonight, we're recommending the construction contract be awarded to Road and Driveway in the amount of their bid, $74,340.43, with a contingency of 10% of that bid, $7,434, for a total amount of $81,774.43. Are there any questions?
Well, oh, you, go ahead. Closer to the mic, thank you.
When this project is completed, will there be a center line?
There, we will, we will stripe coming in and out of the circle, but there will not be a center line.
Could you define that for me?
I think a center line would, would solve the whole problem without the traffic circle. It's so hard for people to know where they're supposed to be on that road.
Well, we could, you know, I'm not-
I'm going to interrupt just so I can follow the conversation.
There's no center line down the middle.
Oh, so you're talking an existing one, not within the roundabout?
Yeah, there is none.
I know, but we were talking about a roundabout, so you're not talking about a center line in the roundabout?
Line.
Line, but exclusive of that? Okay, I just-
Yeah, I'm not sure that, that, that roundabouts the right way.
Got it, okay.
Well, we can stripe the road coming in and out, but we can't stripe the three-way intersection.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
You know, so we can definitely improve the, the lane striping on Port Play, on Port Lane, lanes.
People come into that intersection not knowing where they're supposed to be because there's no center line, it's center line. They think they're both one-way streets.
Well, I, like I say, I can stripe the, I can stripe the road so it's clear that you're coming to an intersection.
Okay.
If we didn't do the circle, we'd have to do a three-way stop, and that's very hard to enforce, and you don't get real change in-
People just don't understand roundabouts, and I don't know why they don't, but-
See, this one is going to be, it's not, it's really just a circle. I mean, I know there's, there is an engineering distinction, but-
Well, I think if there was a center line coming up to that intersection, that would help people know where they're supposed to be.
Yeah, the, the striping plan we have for the circle itself is pretty clear, but I agree, we can definitely take that out to the side streets, to the streets that are leading into that, so it's very clear, this is your lane, follow it.
Where you're supposed to be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification with Counselor Waki. So, looking at a center line going up and down both of these roads, would you prefer the roundabout, or would you prefer the three-way stop? Both of them have center lines bringing it to the intersection.
I don't know. I think that's for an engineer, but I know as a driver-
Yeah.
And, and encountering traffic on those two streets, that people don't know where to go.
Counselor Hinton has the floor.
We can certainly, we can certainly paint the lines down the roads. The question becomes, what do you do inside the intersection?
Right.
Roundabout, or, or put a three-way stop?
Counselor Hinton.
Thank you. I had so many questions about this project, quite frankly, that I had to go out there and look at it, because I'm, I drive into that area and through that area maybe once a day, and I don't, and I can't, I can't wrap my mind around how, okay, it's not a real roundabout, it's just a circle, but how that would work. There's so, there, the, I don't know if you would take the road out to where the, where the right-of-way ends, because there's encroachment into the right-of-way, it seems to me, because I can't measure all those feet you're talking about. And when I was out there looking, and I was poking around in the cul-de-sac and trying to see how to see around there, then I talked with some of the neighbors that were out there, a couple different ones, and I think maybe you have copies of their emails to me, and I think we all got copies of that. And they're suggesting something much more simple, maybe with the center line that Counselor Waki is talking about, but also putting up a couple mirrors on the corner. With the roundabout, one of the things that they were talking to me with, about, was that when people come, go towards the west, and they would have to go around, those that would go either around the roundabout on the correct lane, would dip down closer to that intersection with the cul-de-sac, and it would make it even harder for the people in the cul-de-sac to move out into the traffic. And then there was a fear that one of them had that, that traffic going, you know, northbound would even go on the other side of the roundabout or the circle, just to avoid, you know, a couple more feet of driving around it. So I'm not, you know, I, I'm not quite sure that, that's, unless you're going to be taking back all the right-of-way.
Well, the design works with the right, we are taking a little bit more right-of-way, or we're paving a little more of the right-of-way that is paved right now. Yeah, and we're going to be doing some, some matching to the Port Place, we'll be doing some dig out there and matching to that grade, so we're going to do some paving into Port Place. Mirrors, I do not recommend mirrors, that's not something as an engineer I would recommend in that area. I mean, it, except, it, I, I think it was, is going to work, I recommend it as your traffic engineer, as your city engineer, but certainly we can do some more, and, you know, give you more information about how the design would work, maybe what it would look like in a real, in a schematic.
And the, the other thing that the neighbors recommended were sidewalks, rather than, you know, if you're going to take back the right-of-way, no one complains about that that I've heard of, but to have a sidewalk, because one fellow told me that when he was walking, when he walks on there, he can just, he could, if he wanted to, just reach out and touch the cars, they're that close to him, and it's really dangerous. They talk about some older ladies that walk their dogs there, and it's just really dangerous. So I would rather have, use that, you know, if you're going to take back the right-of-way to consider the pedestrian traffic and put a center line and see if that would help. And I don't think a, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure about a three-way stop, maybe a stop at, at the cul-de-sac, but-
Well, I can't stamp the plans without making some improvements to that intersection. I, we can't overlay it and leave it uncontrolled and, and unsafe as it is now, so, and, and just to answer the one, we are, we still do have room for sidewalks, and that is a long-term goal, to put together our network of future sidewalks. And this is one area that was identified as very walkable, but this doesn't, this won't preclude sidewalks in the future.
I-
Question?
I do.
Okay, if you have more, maybe we can put someone else, and then you could come follow up.
Right, no, the other suggestion that they had were speed bumps, just on going both east and north, to just slow traffic down a little bit that way.
Anyone else? Well, if you were to ask me 10 years ago about roundabouts, I would have said not a chance. I hated them, because I came from Portland, and I thought they were executed very poorly, with an inside and outside lane, and giant statues in the middle. They didn't work, and, but I've been to Bend repeatedly, and they work. They, they, they're, they work very well, and I, I notice the difference when I'm traveling on the roads with the roundabouts versus with the four-way stops, and the traffic congestion, and it's just, it's a, it's a mess, and I, I'm really becoming a big fan of these roundabouts, as long as, I, and I've seen the ones in Bend where they do an inside and outside lane, disaster. Keep it one lane, we'll figure out how to get in and out of it, and it keeps the traffic moving. And a low, you know, fully visible, so you don't put a big statue in the middle, but it's a great place, and they've done it for public art projects, some really nice statuaries in those places, so it's another venue for that. I'm not completely familiar with this, so I'm not going to say, gosh, that'll solve all your problems, but I will say I like roundabouts, and I would, I, I would, they do seem to solve a- do seem to solve a lot of problems in my mind.
Mr. Mayor? Please.
Uh, we have one roundabout in town.
We have one circle in town in Taft.
And has there been hundreds of accidents there?
It's, I mean, it is very similar to the ones in Taft, although we won't have plantings or anything, it'll be-
But I mean, it's similar, and is there a large number of repeated accidents?
Not that I know of.
And, uh, to my point.
Yeah.
Has there been any talk about having it just be one-way, one-way from the split out, one-way north and one-way east?
Not really, um, no, we haven't looked at turning this into one-way.
Because?
Well-
Is it not good, isn't it, isn't it not good for the-
Going one-way is, really, it's the residences that don't like it, because they have to go, they might wanna go to, to, you know, twenty feet-
Right.
Two-hundred feet one-way, and they'll have to go all the way around, so other areas that have suggested one-way, we've looked at them pretty, pretty carefully, and, and it's really the people that are too inconvenienced by that. Um, our transportation system plan didn't recommend any conversion to one-ways.
Thank you.
I just have another-
Someone to ask down this way, if anyone else has one?
I'm very familiar with this traffic flow, and it's a huge block, if it would be a one-way street, a huge block to go around, yeah. It's not a good candidate for one-way.
Councilor Casper? I'm sorry, Anton.
She did have-
No, I was looking down, please, yeah.
Um, I assume this roundabout is large enough to get a fire truck around it then, right?
It is, but if they're in a real, a hurry, they can, they can, it's a very mount, mountable curb, so they can drive right over the circle if they need to.
Okay, so, in essence, they can get through?
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, as long as you don't build up that interior too much.
Right, we're thinking of-
Something in the very center, but nothing-
Yeah.
Except plants that you're gonna squash.
Okay, I would suggest that we all go to page forty-six, that's a pretty good overview of, um, of the area, and the trees are even grown out further than what this shows, and there's a, a rock wall on one side of the, um, street, on the curved part, and-
We are gonna be taking some of those trees down, too.
Well, thanks for telling us.
Yeah.
I would say that this would warrant a neighborhood meeting, rather than, I, this is the first, is it in here that it shows that the trees will be removed, and I just don't know how to read this?
We, we're gonna take them ourselves before, so it's not in the contract. Our street crews are gonna do that.
Was that in your letter out to the neighborhood? I don't remember.
I do not remember, I, I don't remember.
I'm sorry, I can't support this. People would have to know which trees you're talking about, and maybe even go out with some paint, and paint the circle, and see if people can go around it, see if a line could, um, a center line is, and Councilor Waki has suggested would work, rather than, I'm just not sure that you'll have that same support, if they know which trees you wanna take out, or how far you're going back into what now they're using as their property, but is really right-of-way. I just, I think-
It is just a few trees, but we can certainly have a neighborhood meeting, no, no problem. We, we're not heavy into asphalt paving season yet, so-
Well, then, I'm looking for a motion, if anyone wants to make one.
I'd like to see some more outreach, possibly some temporary lines, um, before we go ahead with this project.
I'm taking the, the silence on the motion being made to vote on this as, we're not gonna move forward on this?
I wouldn't vote for it, no.
I heard from you.
I'm not making a motion.
Okay, well, then I guess we're gonna need to hear a little bit more another time.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I could just interject, we, what we have in the packet is a request to award a contract, so, um, and at some point, the bid that was submitted is gonna, has a time-
Good for ninety days.
Associated with it, so we can't just go away and-
How far are we into that bid?
It's good for ninety days.
I know, but when did the clock start?
Um, well, let's see, we opened it, um, on the, what did I say, on the fifteenth?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would just suggest that there be a motion to table this, and instruct the staff to gather more information from the residents, and bring that information back.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to table this, um, for the opportunity of having a neighborhood meeting with all the people that you had sent to before, and identify the trees that would be removed, identify, maybe even by paint, how far into the right-of-way that you'll be needing for this project, and to paint the circle out there, and see if people can maneuver around, given that information, and then maybe the support would be there, maybe it wouldn't, we'll see, but, um, oh, sorry, that doesn't need to be in the motion. Just the motion to table it and-
Do you have a date certain?
Provide-
Yeah, that, thank you.
The twenty-
Gotta be soon.
Twenty-third would be the second meeting in April?
If you give us until the second meeting of April, we'd be prepared.
Okay, I'll start over. I move to table this until there is an opportunity to provide more information to the neighbors, um, and paint the lines and the circle, and identify the trees that will be removed, and come back, um, on, what was the date?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
April twenty-third?
Second.
Motion to second discussion, well, my discussion is, are we gonna require you to go paint stuff for this, I mean, or can we just go talk to people?
No, you gotta paint it, 'cause they don't know.
You're gonna paint the trees?
Sure. We'll just put a-
Bushes.
Identify, well, yeah, some of them are, we'll be able to-
There's some large tags on some trees already, yeah.
Okay.
But we don't know how far back they go, so-
I'll second the motion.
We already did, so, just, we're still in discussion, that was my discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, uh, appointment to visitor and convention committee, Nathan Cole, no, I'm sorry, yeah, that's where we're at, okay.
Um, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
I, um, interviewed Mr. Cole recently, and would recommend appointing him to the VCC. He is manager at a local motel, and I think he brings the lodging point of view to the, to the committee.
Second? Anybody? Anybody?
Second.
Motion to second discussion?
Would like to recuse myself as that's, um, I don't know, maybe a possible conflict of interest. My children are friends with his children, and they go to his house, so I don't know if that's something I need to disclose.
It's not a financial conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you.
Unless he's your babysitter, huh?
Uh, no, wait, go, I mean-
No, it doesn't matter.
No, okay.
But thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just have a question, um, there are three appointments tonight, and I was just trying to figure out which positions those appointments are for, and I figured out that maybe-
Mr. Cole is from the lodging industry.
Mr. Cole is, uh, two, and then so is number ten, Diana Steinman is also position two, or what?
Lodging.
Right, that's what I'm saying, there's one available.
Three openings, and-
Right. There are three openings, yes, but there, um, but there are not, I think there's only one opening for, um, a lodging.
Kathy, can you just speak to that, please?
Can you help us? I don't have the list here, I had my assistant to do the staff report, and I can fit them in to the spots that they need to be in.
They're all qualified.
I only have three applicants, and they all fit into the specific spots that, um, we have open. Qualified.
Well, they might, hmm, just a second. I have a vacancy list for position two, which is the motel lodging operator, a position seven, which is a city resident public person, and a position five, which is an LCSD North or city resident, I'm just curious which, who's filling which position? Because just on the face of it, by looking at their applications, it looks like number, or Nathan and Diana both would fill position two, and we only have one-
Or eligible to fill it.
Eligible, thank you. They don't have to.
Well, I mean, they don't have tied specifically to that, if one of them fits within the LCSD, even though they're in the lodging industry, they could still fill that one.
Okay.
If you look on the, um, uh, the council communications, uh, it states that Mr. Cole qualifies for the city residence slash public position on the visitors' convention committee. Mrs. Joki is, qualifies for the city LCSD North or the city resident position, and Mrs. Steinam, Steinman qualifies for the city motel lodging operator position.
In the motion.
Work for you?
Sure.
Okay. I think we, that was our discussion period, right? Yeah?
Thank you.
Okay, just make sure I know where I'm at. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
May I, Your Honor?
Uh-huh.
I, um, interviewed Laura Joki for the appointment to the VCC, um, to the public or TAF school district position, either one, um, and would recommend her appointment. I think she will bring a fresh viewpoint to the committee. I move to appoint Laura Joki to the visitor convention committee.
A second.
Motion to second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? I stand opposed, and motion carries. And then appointment in visitor convention committee, it is Diana Steinman, right? We don't have enough of a Diana thing going on here?
No.
Okay, I think it was Diana.
Have to ask her. Honor-
Please.
I, um, interviewed Diana Steinman, um, and she could fill the motel lodging position or the, um, city resident position, um, and I think she would be a great asset to the committee. I move to appoint Diana Steinman to the visitor and convention committee.
Second.
Motion to second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all very much for your, uh, time and, and, uh, desire to help. Uh, city manager, city attorney reports, police chief. Is there something happening with their police chief? Look at all these. Well, I was sweating, I was like, what did I do wrong this time?
I'm gonna stand with two very fine gentlemen on this one.
You gotta bring that up.
I'm gonna stand with two very fine gentlemen on this point. I think as most people are aware, our, uh, chief, Keith Killian, has decided it's time to golf, instead of be a policeman. So he is retiring in about two weeks, and, uh, and actually will be leaving our area, and we will miss him greatly. I have personally thoroughly enjoyed working with him, he's a very fine chief, and will miss him and wish him the best in his next endeavor. That puts us in a transition period to, uh, replace Chief Killian, and so, um, I have appointed, um, Lieutenant Jerry Palmer to be an interim police chief. We will do the official swearing-in on, uh, April twenty-third, so we can arrange for his family and others to be here. But I wanted to just take a minute and present these two gentlemen to you tonight, one with a great vote of thanks for all he's done, one with a great vote of thanks for all he's going to be doing. It's interesting that, uh, not only did I visit with each of you about your impressions, but I called several others about Lieutenant Palmer, and they're, uh, he is very highly recommended, and we're just really thrilled to be able to appoint him to be our interim police chief. So I'm gonna give each of these gentlemen a moment to talk, and go sit down.
I don't have much to say, other than the pile on my desk is getting smaller, and his is getting deep. I've thoroughly enjoyed being the chief here for the last five years, it's been, um, often quoted, and it's still true, that I thought this was gonna be a pretty simple, quiet, nice retirement job, and it's been nothing but. But I've thoroughly enjoyed the work that I've been doing here. It's been the most challenging work I've done in, in quite a while, and when you put those challenges, it's also the most rewarding and stuff, so I've, uh, I've appreciated being your chief, and I hope I've served you and the community well.
Thank you, Chief. And Lieutenant, I'm sorry, we do need you to kinda get up there.
It's a humbling and daunting task, uh, it came a lot more suddenly than I expected, I kinda, actually kinda expected Keith and I to go out together once he got here with the new building project, and, and the things that we have rolling at this time, but, uh, I'm humbled by the support from the team here in the back, and, and the friends around the county, and from the council, and I'll do my best not to let you down.
Who's got the Gatorade bucket? All right, well, thank you both so much, and, and so, official title-
Chief.
You'll be chief.
As of?
As of our, as of tonight.
Welcome aboard, chief.
Thank you, chief. Come on up, shake your hand. Absolutely.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
All right.
I know nobody had a Gatorade.
Why we swing these things?
Thank you. Keep me updated on your handicap.
Would, yes. I try not to hit anyone else with coffee, I do.
And thank you to, to all the officers who've, uh, been so, uh, supportive and, and take care of us here, and we deeply appreciate you all. Thank you very much. And with that, is that the end of that?
I have one, uh, well, one more thing.
Well, no, that's the end of that, though, and-
Well, one more comment. Chief Palmer has two huge assignments. The first is very unenviable. Tomorrow, he gets to sit down with me and explain a budget that Keith prepared. And, uh, then the other one is much more fun, and that is, he will become our point person on the new building.
Great, congratulations. Gun range, remember the gun range. We're still pulling for that, right?
Two votes anyway.
You still have more for us?
I do.
Okay?
So in your packet, um, I wanted to have a discussion with you, as far as you want to take it, you can complete it tonight, or we can carry it forward, on, uh, priorities for the upcoming year. In the past, we have put our priorities as part of the calendar year, um, I would like to change that, so that the priorities are actually part, uh, go along with the fiscal year. So these would really be in effect from July first through June thirtieth, and one of the reasons for that, it just corresponds with everything else we do, which is fiscal year. Uh, the other thing is that, um, in your staff report, I gave you an update on where we are with the priorities that you already, uh, that we have been working on, and, uh, and overall, uh, with a little bit of tweaking, uh, the, I am recommending that, uh, we carry forward with the projects that you have already established. I have given to you tonight, uh, just a summary of what I think they, of what I think those would, the tweaking would be on those. Plus, um, I've added two other items on it, one is emergency preparedness, and the other is financial. Uh, under the financial one, it would be to continue with the financial policies that were established in last year's budget. These are not glamorous, but I think they are some of the most important things that we have done. Uh, we also, um, I think I gave you some comments by Counselor Hinton, that she- Uh, we also, um, I think I gave you some comments by Counselor Hinton that she sent to me today as well, uh, on some, uh, on some ideas and goals that she has. And so, Mayor, with that, um, I can go through these, or just turn it over to you to begin discussion, and how you would like to proceed.
Well, um, that's a tough call. There's a lot on here. I don't know if we wanna be here all night on this, but Counsel, you have a preference? You want them to read through these, or you got your highlighters out already?
Well, Mayor, I'd, I'd agree first with the suggestion of changing to a fiscal year, so we can get that off the table. I think that makes a lot of sense, ties into the budget, um, and all that. So at least that's something we've accomplished.
Well, Ron, I don't hear a big objection to you starting, so go ahead.
Okay. Um, last year, one of our goals and priorities that we had was, uh, was simply listed as Parks and Outdoor Recreation, which had three parts, establish more parks, pocket parks, and hire a park time, or hire a Parks and Recreation Director. We completed that last one. Uh, we, um, so, in, uh, if you care, if you want to carry this forward, I've revised the language a little bit to make it just a little bit more specific. Uh, and that would include develop Parks and Recreation Facilities, and I have four, uh, items on there. Uh, the first is the Parks Board to recommend the priorities based on the Parks Master Plan. That was a big discussion we had in the last couple of meetings as to what those priorities would be. The second is to develop the Taft or, and/or Kill Parks, including the funding sources available for the development. The third is to develop the Pocket Parks. And then last year, we also had a teen center, which I have just simply added to this as part of the Parks and Recreation. So those are the four items that I have identified, um, with the exception of the priorities, the, the other three are, uh, carrying forward with, and providing a little bit more detail from what we did last year. Under the Police Services, uh, last year, we had two things that, uh, that, um, were identified. One is modernization, and the second was to attract and retain police officers. I'm very proud to say that, uh, we have done well in both the attraction and training of officers. We currently have two vacancies. Uh, interviews will be held next week for those, and we hope to have that, those filled, and when they are, they will be, uh, fully up to speed. The big project, as we look over the next year, really is the construction of a new police building. And that will take, uh, a considerable amount of time for Chief Palmer, myself, uh, our Finance Director, uh, and, uh, and others who will be involved with that. Under Economic Development, again, this is much with carrying forward with what we have been doing. Um, last year, we identified, uh, high-speed internet for business, municipal broadband. As Counselor Casper has been really spearheading this project, that seems to be morphing just a little bit, so I just simply identified it as broadband. I have talked to her about, uh, in our next council meeting of, uh, providing an update to you as to where we are. We also had identified living wage jobs, rezoning for industrial property, um, one, and then the ones that I, and then we also had elimination of blight, and then I added a little bit to that. Under the elimination of blight, I put through the creation of a new urban renewal district. And then I also put, um, to expand the urban renewal toolbox, to include all city commercial properties, uh, instead of just those within a district. So in other words, it would not fall within urban renewal. It would be the toolbox in the city fashioned after the urban renewal one. Infrastructure, um, uh, last year, we simply, um, identified water and sewer, but without much specificity to that. Um, I have tried to put a little more specificity, and as I have discussed with our public work staff, uh, the biggest goal that we would like for you to set is that we do not defer infrastructure maintenance. It's an easy thing to do, um, but in the end, it can, it can create very expensive problems. So we have identified three items of which we would like to go forward on, under that basis of not deferring infrastructure. The first, to develop, uh, plans, including funding sources for the, um, sewer capital plan, and we have discussed those in the past. The second is continue with our street overlay projects. Uh, um, we, I, we began that three budgets ago, where we have been using additional funding, uh, to support the overlay projects. We think that we should continue that. And then the third is that we have, uh, Capital Water Plan, uh, Capital Water and Plan that has identified improvements, and, uh, we would like to continue with those improvements. The next item that we had, which is a carry forward from last year also, is workforce housing. Um, we, I define this as just broad general, I guess, of create workforce housing opportunities with Lincoln City. And, uh, these three items are, um, carryovers from this last year. One is the sale of city smaller properties. If you recall, we have several small remnant lot-sized properties. Um, we have put the, putting those out on market on hold while we have worked on the development of the larger parcels. Um, this last week, we met on the workforce housing projects we had, I believe it was fourteen or sixteen, uh, proposals that came in. Uh, we'd like to continue with that. It will take us a good chunk, well, really, when you see it from start to fruition, all of next year. And then to continue to work with the land, uh, Lincoln Community and Land Trust to identify and develop workforce housing. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, from a staff standpoint, and I know in discussion with some of you, emergency preparedness is, is, uh, is an important topic. Um, it, overall goal would be simply to prepare the city for emergencies, and we've identified three tasks. The first is to encourage all residents to develop personal household emergency plans. The second is to continue to train staff in emergency preparation, and, uh, the thing that we are trying to focus on this year are very specific types of emergencies, um, and then coordinate with other emergency response organizations in preparation and training. And then finally, as I mentioned, um, uh, the financial goals that we established, um, in the last budgets, I, uh, would like to keep those moving forward, um, and keep them as, as part of our goals as a city. And then, as I mentioned, Counselor Hinton had sent some information to me earlier, and I have given that to you.
Yes, please.
Um, Mr. Chandler, can you, um, refresh my memory? Was the teen center included in the Parks Master Plan?
I think it was.
Jeannie's not in her head, I think so. And then the, the other thing I, um, am hoping, under Economic Development, elimination of blight, that that includes code enforcement?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, and by the way, in the, um, uh, staff report, we did not change, uh, Craig Craddock's job. He actually works in our sewer collections. Um, our code enforcement officer is Craig, Craig Grabenhurst, so my apologies for not being that correct.
All right, and then just so I'm clear, what do you want from us tonight? Just a head nod?
Um, I would like you to establish your goals. If you think these are fine, uh, I think a motion to approve these would be great. If you want to change them, change them. If you want to eliminate all of them and do something different, that's fine. Um, whatever you feel that you would, uh, like to accomplish this year.
Well, I'd, I'd like just to, I, I like that this is all on a couple pages, and I'd like another chance, you know, a few days just to look at it and, uh, and think about what I might wanna add or subtract, if that's okay. You wanna make a motion tonight? Yes, Counsel Casper?
I, I would just also like to add something to it that I, I think would be, um, significant, and has been kicked around for a while, Stormwater Master Plan.
Yes, please.
Um, you all have a copy of, um, things that I've been thinking about, and I don't know if they belong in an overall goals, or if they're collected some other way, um, perhaps in the, in the budget. But, um, I also have, um, on my list, Stormwater Management Plan. So I would second Counselor Casper. And I also have several things on this list. The emergency preparedness, which is also on Mr. Chandler's list, I would beef that up. I think that's, um, that's not enough. I think we need to be finding and writing grants to provide caches in every geographic neighborhood, and I believe the money's out there. We just have to get ready to go do it and find the money, and we have support for that, um, from other elected officials in our area. So I, I just think because we are very vulnerable, that we ought to step up and, um, be more And you can see my other things in here, some of them look more like, um, that they are requests for funding. One, one other thing I have on here that isn't funding, but I would just like to bring your attention to, is our highway signs. Our signs say 101. That is also known as the Pacific Coast Highway, or Coast Highway, and I've seen other signs in other cities to that effect. And I would like to add that as a goal, that we change our signage.
Were we originally in Taft Memorial Highway?
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt.
Highway.
Roosevelt was president, well, that was, yeah, got it, thank you.
Many, many years ago.
Counsel Anderson?
I'm that old, so I remember that.
I remembered reading it, but I...
Um, I, I guess I, I like what I see here, made a couple of notes. Um, I, I wonder, aren't we presupposing, uh, under Parks and Rec, develop Pocket Parks and Teen Center? But number one, we've asked the board to make priorities. So I, I guess I would, not that those aren't important or of interest, but I would, would suggest we wait and let them tell us what their priorities are, would be mine. Um, the other thing, I, I looked through here, and it's a, an issue for me. Um, I can see things that, um, I'm strongly interested in, um, and I see broadband, uh, for my cohort here. But I, I think it's important that each of us, um, not get neglected, would be what I would say, is, i- if you have a, you know, you still got time on council and have a desire in the next fiscal year, um, or two, for a, something important to you, now's the time to get it on a goal list. Um, and I'm, so I would be looking at these to what's important to you, because as you can see how councils operate, they become long lists, uh, of things to do, and we get So, you know, it, and for me, a goal isn't something we just, you know, think about, you know, washing signs, you know, one week, and, you know, putting up something else next week. Um, so if your hot button isn't on here, I, I think you need to, you know, make that known, um, so we can find a place for it, 'cause it, it may take the remainder of your term, uh, two years to accomplish it, but I, I know like most electeds, they wanna go out with something they can really get their hands around and say, I moved that through.
Right, and I would agree with that, 'cause I, one of my big projects since back on the Bama days was the, uh, rebuilding, restoration, and enlargement of the dock. I think that's, it, it's the icon of our city right there with the Four Brothers, and I see it in the repair it's in. I, I just think it's shameful. Wrong word. Ashame. And I would love to see us move forward on, on, uh, on doing those things. And I've got others, but I don't have to bring them up now, but if it's okay if we move back to this, each of us inject our, what we want, and then...
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
I will put this on the next agenda.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else, sir? Ms. Appicello?
Um, on, on these goals, you know, I have a project list as well, and, uh, and, and some of those things have become stale, or I'm not sure whether or not anybody's interested. There were discussion about, uh, septic inspection ordinances and searing the lake, and, and certain things got pushed back, and, you know, uh, people on council changed. So I guess I'd encourage you to, to take a look at that list, like, maybe I'll just send it out again.
Please do.
And, and think about, is there anything on, on there that needs to be revived or needs to be taken off? And I know that, uh, Counselor Hinton has sent me extensive, extensive comments on, on things on my list, and what, what she thinks I should do with them, some of which weren't, you know, very nice, but, um, for the most part, I...
Shocked.
I, I just, I would like some input and, uh, try to get these, get together on these, 'cause there's certain things that weigh on my mind, oh, well, we haven't done that septic inspection ordinance, and if in fact it's not a priority for anybody, then I won't feel so bad about it not coming back, so...
Yeah, and, and if I can piggyback on that, and it's a complaint I have about modern life, um, this, the emails and the texts and things like that, I don't, I can't convey how many I get in a day.
Give you hard copies of the list, so you don't get a number...
And it's difficult, yeah, that's why, you know, I could use an assistant too, but I can get one. Is, it, it, I don't want anyone to feel like you're not being paid attention to. It's just the sheer volume. It, it's impossible to go, oh, City Attorney needed this attention, oh, this and this and this.
I'll put it in your box, so you all have a hard knock.
Yeah, and if you don't hear, say, feel free, I mean, it's just a click of a button, and I'm good.
May I make a recommendation that you make a motion? We all go back to handwritten letters, that would solve those problems.
I would be insubordinate. But anyway, uh, thank you for reminding us, and thank you in advance for sending that out. Is that everything then tonight? Okay. Uh, we had no, nothing to talk about from executive session. Uh, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items. Seeing none. Announcements or comments by City Council? Sir?
So, last meeting, we ex-nayed a Pocket Park, and it was, I think, you know, the money that was there, um, up to council. I'd still like that place to be something for that community. I think it was wonderful that the community came up, the church was involved. You know, I know I spoke with Carl as well about what he wanted to do and have this kind of peace walk and this walk, and then it turned into this Pocket Park, and then the money was involved and things like that, and so, is there a way that we could still have something with, like, a walk and a, you know, maybe a park bench or something like that, some, a place to still go and do that in that same area and working with them? I think that would be more in line with what they wanted, and still something that we can do and have there at that place. So bringing up and seeing what you guys think about that.
I completely agree, and I, I guess I should have continued my thoughts. I like the idea of just a space. The idea of developing it the way that we were talking is not of interest to me, but what you're saying is much of interest to me. I like that idea. Please.
Just to, yeah, just to answer, um, answer your question about that. Um, I supported the idea of the Pocket Park with the, um, equipment on it, but that, um, obviously didn't pass. And so, you're, that area still seems to be of interest, um, not only to the church and the people that use it, but, um, what about dogs? Would that make a good dog park?
Yeah.
First of all, as far as a dog park, fairly small. However, um, the property is currently zoned as open space, so fitting with what Counselor Hoagland is talking about, uh, that, if I understand what he's describing, it would fit very well with that. If we were to look into creating a, a dog park or a Pocket Park like we, uh, were proposing earlier, then we would need to rezone the property. The property was not purchased with open space funds, uh, so it can be changed to park, uh, zoning if you desire. It can remain as open space, and we can explore Counselor Hoagland's ideas if you desire.
If I could just, just sort of run the conversation, if you don't mind, is, when I was looking at my property down south, and I was considering turning it into a dog park, at least that back half, I did a lot of research on smaller sites, and they're abundant. There are areas in big cities where you can't have twenty acres... There are areas in big cities where you can't have 20 acres of land, and the dogs are just as happy on 10,000 square feet. You just have to limit the people going into it. You can say you got a max of 10 dogs, or whatever. And I, I just want to kind of think, we have to, maybe have to restructure our thinking a little bit. It doesn't have to be acres and acres and acres. It could be several small ones, as long as a neighborhood could use it. And I just don't want to disqualify properties, because they're not as big as maybe we think they should be. Anyway, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Mayor, do we, how do we make this happen? Do we make a motion to have the staff explore the possibility of having a trail on this property?
Or just a simple direction to...
Parks.
Ron, help us out. How do we, how do we get this to Jeannie?
Well, I, if, if I understand what Counselor Hoagland is asking, I think the motion you would be making is for the staff to explore the development of that park in accordance with our open space ordinance, which would allow things such as passive recreational activities, such as hiking, bird watching, picnicking, nature walks, or similar uses, the development and maintenance of trails, education activities and ecological research projects, natural resource restoration, interpretive display, and such other uses as the park director determines. So if I under, if, if that's correct, I think if you just say a motion to follow our open space ordinance, that would, that would suffice.
Well, I would like to make that motion.
All right.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion? Oh, go ahead, Counsel Anderson.
Yeah, I just, nothing wrong with the motion. I think that follows it. I guess, again, we, we have a park committee, board, whatever. I'm assuming when we took action last meeting, you, they're, they know of it. We tried to make it clear to them that we weren't against parks. So I, you know, it's almost like we like to make motions, give direction. Maybe they're not interested anymore. And so, Counselor Hoagland, maybe a visit to the Parks Committee, sharing with your idea and vision, and coupled with the open space knowledge, you know, let them go with it, and bring us back a proposal. I think one of the problems we will face is, you know, that those dollars were for purchase. We'll need to clean that up in the budget cycles, loosen up, so it's for development or maintenance or something, to give them some money. That goes back to my earlier statement of having on the goals Pocket Parks. You know, I don't know if it interests them anymore. It was an opportunity, but maybe, you know, let them have it.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have a Parks Director in the audience. Maybe she might have some more information to provide for us about this.
Well, we do have a Parks Director here.
Yes, we do.
She's in. You were right. Strings got pulled there. Shouldn't have them for another year.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I appreciate this very much. I did meet with the Parks and Recreation Board last Wednesday, let them know of the decision of the city council, which we would adhere to and move in a positive direction. We do have other park projects on hand, but we always will. And if you would like to come, Counselor Hoagland, and, and speak with our board, that's great. If you'd like to have a motion for me to work with the church and Carl Reynolds and move forward on it, whatever your decision is with that. I do know that the Parks Board is willing to adhere to what city council thinks is best for our community members, but they do very much appreciate having guest speakers come in, and we have that every Parks and Recreation Board meeting. Counselor Hinton's on the next one, actually, to bring up an idea that you all addressed at the last city council meeting, the Heritage Tree. So, open invite. Does that answer your question?
Question? Thanks.
Yep, thank you all.
Any other discussion? All right, then, if all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for clarifying that, Ron. Thank you, Counsel Hoagland, for bringing that up again. Appreciate it.
Just for clarity, that motion wasn't going to, you're not spending any money.
Nope.
If you're going to spend money, we'll be coming back.
We will.
Yeah, yeah, just, just some direction. Okay, where are we? Oh, we're still, yeah, I'm sorry, comments by city council? Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder for all of us councilors, your statement of economic interest ought to be in there. Those who don't check their emails, you know, Mayor.
Scolded by Kathy five times yet, so...
The other one I got, just as a reminder, evidently Pacific Power is on the move in producing smart meters. I got my notice that they're going to be swapping out my meter for a hi-tech meter, so be aware of that activity in town.
I don't have anything in particular, except that we are going to be celebrating the Easter Passover weekend coming up. To all of you who are of that persuasion, I hope you have a blessed time. And if that's it, may God bless you all, may God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned. You called it, Mr. Appicello. Good job.